Because when they're in Wayne, we pay the biggest part of the budget. The budget is like 125,000, which we pay 75,000 and Wayne pays 5,000. Plus, you lose people that would've been in Garden City, maybe buying their drugs there, maybe buying a quart of milk, gallon of milk there, and it moves us further away. Believe me, when they're in Wayne, Wayne is going to get first choice. That's how I feel. I feel you had a responsibility to try to work it out, to keep them in Garden City instead of just selling them off to Wayne.
Mayor, if I could respond to that comment as well?
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, the employees, the operations are at the Wayne Center, but the employees have been blended and there are Garden City employees as well as Wayne employees working at that dispatch center. The other thing is, under the agreement, both communities pay almost exactly the same amount of money for the dispatching center, so the costs are almost identical.
Okay. We're getting a little off track, though. It's supposed to be on the fireworks ordinance, so... Any other comments on fireworks ordinance? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Corwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Corry?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
Item C4, amendment to the council rules. As we discussed...
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move to adopt as presented amendment number one to the city council rules of procedure relating to the sections governing public participation at meeting, disorderly conduct at public meetings, publication of proceedings, community announcements, copies of rules, and meeting agendas. Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires, discussion from council, from the general public. Mr. Buckner?
This would probably be about the only time I ever agree with Mr. David. But, Mr. Walker, you're trying to, once again, stagger our freedoms for five minutes to three. Go back and look at the last 10 or 12 meetings, and you'll have an average, give or take, eight people up here. So let's do some math. Eight people, the average, you're taking away two minutes. Wow, that's 16 minutes. That's a lot, lot of your time. So what we asked of you, 16 minutes. I will tell each and every one of you that votes for this, I personally will campaign to get you out of office. It's not a threat, it's a promise.
Thank you. Mr. Wallace?
I went back exactly here. I have all the council meetings for four years on tape on City Hall, okay? And for anybody to restrict my amount of minutes to five minutes, I'm very upset. Jalen Lynch, you said you can email me. Jalen Lynch, I emailed City Office. City Office. It never got to anybody. Somebody got into my email and erased it, and I still got proof. Jalen, I personally emailed you back and told you that somebody went in it. Someone deleted. I can prove it. I've got the software at home that does it. I trade stock, okay? And my recorder on the computer, if they're wrong, they'll pay the financial and lawyer fee. But it was deleted, and some of it was manipulated. No one else ever received it. Several times, you said communication. How many times have I dropped papers off to you people up here? Six rims of paper I spent, they had to override several times. No one ever read it. No one ever read it. So don't tell me how you can communicate with you. You can't. Give me an email that's safe, that nobody else in City Hall will read it. I've talked to a couple people here at City Hall, and they say one of our council members stays in the city manager's office more than he does. How am I going to communicate with you? Tell me. I call your numbers, the other numbers? I only hear from Mr. Fetter, Mayor Walker, Corwin, Corwin, and Jody Dodson. I've never, I've called and left two messages for Mrs. Squires, I haven't heard that you didn't get them. Something's wrong with your phone. I, you know, and you go back and look. There's 7.6 on the average from one year to the other that gets up here and speaks. 7.6. You're talking less than 16 minutes. Less than 16 minutes. You have somebody that sets up all the agendas, and if they had a little bit of brains, they could level each week off and go two and a half hours would be the max. Look at all the things we have. Sometimes we have different departments that come up here and speak for an hour and 38 minutes. An hour and 38 minutes. The meeting where they called Channel 4 News and said, "We just had a five-hour meeting," there was eight people that talked. And the rest of it was because the community center and everybody else spent there. We spent five and a half hours in here. That's right, we did. But it wasn't because of the communications of the public. For anybody that votes against that, I will tell you what. I'll spend everything I can to defeat you in the next elections. You'll never be a part of my life here in this city. This city's already gone downhill. I first moved to this city as the best city to live in. We still have the best police department and the best fire department. But, boy, I'll tell you what, when you get up there and try to restrict my minutes, my minutes, I pay taxes. I've paid a lot of taxes in this city. Lot of them. For what, to get cut for two minutes, for two lousy minutes? Two lousy minutes. And you're going to make a big issue over two lousy minutes when every one of you up here sitting and talking, and yak, 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 yak. And if you condense your minutes, you could save yourself, this whole town, about an hour and a half. Learn to, learn like we have to do. Learn what we have to do. Constrict your time. Rephrase your, get educated on how to speak. You, over and over and over and over and over the same old thing, you're tired of hearing it. If you allow, someone allows you 16 minutes, what would you do? Or five minutes? You've got some times I discuss time, and I heard a lady up here speaking for 18 minutes and said nothing. Absolutely nothing. Don't restrict my minutes. I pay taxes. I support this city. I coached 29 years in this city. I love this city. But you're getting to where that this is the worst place I've ever been in in my life for the last two years. The last two years. When we get to public comments, I'll go over detail of it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Weisack?
I'm stunned by where your open, open-door meetings are, where I can get in contact with you. I, up to this day, I don't do email, but I, up to this day, I don't know any of your phone numbers. I went to the mayor's office once. I got canceled three times. I went, I spoke to him, me and my husband, because he was saying something that wasn't factual. So we went and talked to him, and talked to him nicely, got on a good track. As I'm leaving, me and my husband said, "Well, that was quite fruitful." As we left the door, it was closed, he opened it and said to me, "I still think I'm right." Even though I had the proof that what he was saying wasn't factual. I go to all the, more budget meetings than probably anybody. The city manager's there. He made a couple of statements, but I corrected them, and not, not in front of anybody. After the meeting, we walked out to his car. I told him what he said wasn't factual, and he looked at me like, "You're telling me? You're a lone lady?" So I said to him, "The reason I know this is I have a son who's a tax lawyer, a very famous tax lawyer, probably five in the country. He's rated in the top five tax lawyers in this country. I wanted to help." I said, "I can get information from you. I can get tax legal advice." He said to me, "I'd like to talk to that son of yours." And I said, "You got $1,000 an hour? So where's your open door, Mrs. Mayor, vote down? I have never talked to you. I, the only thing I think is, these meetings are a farce. And, Mayor, if you think that I come to these meetings because I want this old wrinkled face and gray hair on TV, you are badly mistaken."
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Justine Pummel. I live at 32221 Henepen. I have lived here all my life. I really love Garden City. I attend a lot of the school board meetings, so you probably don't see me, but I do try to catch the council meetings on TV and, or cable, or online. I'll go online and check them out. And the Observer article caught my attention about the Garden City Council to consider time restraint. And it really struck me as odd that there are so many parallels to the school board. Mr. Corry mentioned it tonight. Unfortunately, our school board did vote to limit the public to three minutes. And I am here to say, that did not help communication. It didn't help at all. You are sending a message that, hey, we don't want to listen to you. Whether you like it or not, that is the message that's being sent. And from not being here in person, but watching, and listening, and looking online, I can say that I have seen a tactic used, that when people don't agree with you, you like to label them as negative, or there being, you know, name-calling. And yet, those same people name-call in return. Sending the clowns, I read, you heard, well, it's just, you know what? We get to voice our opinions. And your job as elected officials is really to listen. And if a meeting's five hours, so be it. If you don't like it, resign. I really mean that. Because as a citizen of this community, I think it's so important for elected officials to say, you know what? We do want to hear you. Whether we agree with it or not, that's what's respectful. So you need to watch your tone, Mr. Walker, and other people that I've heard, because I could say the same. The tone of voice, the body language, the looks, woo, you guys better watch it, because it's going both ways. But I don't even, I don't even mind it. I don't even necessarily want it to stop. That's the freedom of American citizens in a public setting, get to come up and voice their opinions. Just like if our charter says our, our city manager should live here, well, then guess what? I think you should change the charter if you don't like it. You should change the charter, because if you're not following it, he probably should be removed. But I'm not here to speak on that. I'm here to speak on the time limit. And I really believe that five minutes is not that long, and I believe that it is up to you, elected officials, to really take into account what your community members, whether you agree with them or not. You really, your job is to listen, because guess what? You still get to vote. You still get to vote how you want. So could you at least listen to us, whether you agree with us or not? And a lot of those letters to the editors I've read, they're just as disrespectful. And I'm not going to name names like they have, like I've read in the paper, name names. A lot of times, I've agreed with the people they're down in. So my point to you is, be respectful both ways. Yes, we get to speak our opinions, and I feel like the way people talk. Well, you ran for office, you're elected, and I implore you to vote against this, because I don't like how it was jammed in with a lot of other things either. It was really wrapped into a lot of things, where you might agree with some things and not others, so that's why you have to vote it down then. If you don't agree with one thing in it, you would have to vote it down and piece it out. So I do believe I'm asking you to vote now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Weisack?
I'll unvote the votes.
Mr. Goins?
First of all, I compliment that previous speaker. He's good as I've heard up here, and actually, I'd like to have you on my team. If you're looking for somebody to team up with, team up with this old man. Now, I'd like to say to you, Mayor, you have a, you wield a lot of authority with that gavel. And I know how you can handle that gavel, and you're only talking about your two minutes. And if you add that, you're talking about, say, four, five, or six people. Say, if you're talking about six people that gets up there, that's 12 minutes. And look at the business that goes on here at this city hall. And I tell you, it's a sad thing, but I can see the city falling apart. And you, if somebody's out of order, me or anybody else, drop that gavel on them. It's not the first, it won't be the first time I've been called out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Goins. Mr. Weisack?
Council, make no mistakes tonight. What you're amending and what you're asking is the most important vote you will take tonight by far, with the longest lasting effects on the people of the city and on the city itself. Ask yourself, we've had 50 years of council meetings. Why in the last couple of years are we having the kinds of meetings and restrictions we have today? Have the people out here changed much? What's changed? Think hard what's changed at that table. At that table. Who's responsible for the way that meetings are conducted? Who is responsible? The people there? Are you going to vote yes and support the arrogance of the chair? Are you going to suppress the people's right to speak? And to find out, please, I was so glad, went on a previous question of the action earlier, that I heard all the whining from the table by those who are usually dishing it out. Oh, I almost stopped. They were going to start in tears. It doesn't make much when during that same discussion, just think about what took place in that discussion. That in itself, the way that was handled after you were asked if you wanted to add anything, Mr. Corwin, should in itself convince you that the people of this city should not be under the arrogance of that chair, and you should not be entertaining the thought of helping them do it. Now, I had a lot of things prepared, prepared, and I'm not here to take my picture either. My days for Hollywood are all past, so I'm up here not for TV rights. I visited a number of cities, a number of cities, and the mayor only gave you half the tooth when he talked about time limits. Yeah, time limits are there for most communities. Also, a major fact is the decorum of the meeting is based upon the conduct of the chair. He sets the tone. Our mayor sets the tone for what you are under now. Don't let him continue to do so. In other cities, while they have limits, the limits are not absolute. Absolute. They're flexible. Can't be granted instructions upon a request of the person or an expression by the council that you'd like to hear more. The council people will answer questions if they so desire. Or they don't, they don't. Then Mr. Corwin, a couple weeks ago, wanted to say something, and the mayor told him, wait till the end of the meeting. How we would talk to another council person like that, and how Mr. Corwin restrained himself, I just find it hard. Don't disappoint the people here. The majority of the people at that table, in my mind, are good people, looking to move this city ahead. Don't let somebody impede you from letting the people of this city know what's taking place. I implore you not to. The chairperson sets the civility. The civility is the key to the meetings. I ask that the council of the other cities...
You have 30 seconds, Mr. Weisack.
Would the chair ever gamble a person down while they're in mid-thought or mid-sentence? Or would they ever consider shutting TV off? They almost passed out with amazement at my question. Do the right thing, council. Vote for the people. Don't vote for arrogance at its highest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisack.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I agree with Mrs. Pummel. That was a very good point you made at the very end about how we have many things that we're voting on in one, and you may agree with everything but one or two or whatever. And I totally agree with you. I'm going to withdraw my motion, and I'm going to ask that this come back at the next meeting broken down somehow so that we can give it accurate voting for what it is that really needs to be changed.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. So we'll leave it in?
I agree.
We'll leave it in B?
Mm-hmm.
And we'll, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item C5, purchase of the fire pump.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Fetter?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, this is the transfer?
Yeah, yes.
5A?
Yep. 5A. Hang on a minute. Ms. Bettis, can we do all three at once? Or they got to be done separate?
I'm sorry, we've got a motion on the floor to amend the council rules.
No, no.
No, 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 no.
We left that in B.
I withdrew my motion and asked that we leave it in B so that we can bring it back in a different way.
Mr. Corwin? I apologize. Can we do all five?
That's what I meant. Can we do number C5 all together?
A, B, and C.
Will that satisfy the grant?
No.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Fetter. I was trying to save you.
I appreciate it.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer appropriation in the amount of $34,436 for the purchase of a fire truck, decreasing 101-292-965.000 and increasing
Support.
Support from Ms. Squires. Discussion from council, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Corwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Corry?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Item CB?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Fetter?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the supplemental appropriation in the amount of $34,436 for the purchase of a fire truck, increasing revenue for 01-401-160.000, general fund transfer, and expenditures from account 401-401-332.345 EMS truck.
Support. Support from Mr. Corwin. Discussion from council, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Corwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Corry?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Item 5C, award of the bid.
Mayor?
Ms. Dodge?
I move to award the bid for the purchase of a Stipend Shield Custom Fire Pumper to the responsible low bidder Apollo Fire Apparatus sales in the amount of $384,436, and to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents on behalf of the city related to this bid award.
Support.
Support from Mr. Corry. Discussion from council, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Corry?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Corwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Item C6, senior center hours at Maplewood Street entrance at the Maplewood Center.
Mayor?
Ms. Dodge?
I move to approve the proposed change in the senior center hours to Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and the reopening of the Maplewood Street entrance to Maplewood Center, Monday through Thursday, 8:45 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Friday, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., effective September 4, 2012.
Support.
Support from Ms. Lynch. Discussion from council, from the general public.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Corwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Corry?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Item C7, Garden City Hockey Association charitable gaming license.
Mayor?
Ms. Squires?
I move to approve the recognition of the Garden City Hockey Association as a nonprofit organization in the city of Garden City for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license through the state of Michigan, and to authorize the city manager to execute any necessary agreements.
Support.
Support from Mr. Corry. Discussion from council, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Corry?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Corwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Item C9, removal of the city manager.
I'll make a motion this night at this time. Charter provides for the process whereby city council will suspend the manager.
Want me to read it all again, or?
That's not really an action motion, yes.
Pardon me?
You just said that the city charter provides this. You didn't give an actual motion.
You need to make the motion. Okay. I want a copy of your original motion. Do you have a copy of the original motion, Ms. Bettis?
The one that he just gave me?
No, when he made the motion. Did you note what it was?
He hasn't made a motion yet.
No.
Place it on the C agenda?
No, I'm sorry. No, I didn't write that down.
I'll make a motion to suspend the city manager. I mean, I can read this again if anybody likes. This is the process, and I did read it before, but I can do it again.
The preliminary resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Mayor?
Ms. Dodge?
I move to approve the preliminary resolution to remove the city manager.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Corwin. Discussion from council. Again, I think this is, I don't think it's right. I said it up earlier, you've heard me. Ms. Squires?
I'm in agreement. I'm in agreement. I don't have the information. I was not given the common courtesy of a phone call to let me know this was going to be here tonight. And I feel that, as I understand, Mrs. Lynch and the mayor also did not receive calls. Is there some kind of conspiracy going on here? Is there a reason? You know, nobody can answer that? I just feel that it's wrong. We need to move forward in this city, not to move backwards. I don't feel...
I don't feel, Mr. McCleary has hurt the city at all. And evidently, his review said the same thing. And you guys are the ones that also gave his review. I see no good reason to do this, and I cannot support it.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I said it earlier, I have even less information than the rest of the council does because I wasn't at the evaluation meeting. I have nothing in front of me. I received no telephone call. I can't responsibly act on something like that with no information.
Discussion from the public? Mr. Wallace?
I can give you several reasons why it should be gone. He's taken money to visit Garden City. Mayor, you figured his time for his car is five days travel to Garden City. He breached his contract when he's taking that money and only driving here four times. I don't care about his leisure time of going here and there, but I want to read something to you. First of all, how many cities in Michigan have a full-time city manager that works four days a week? None, nada! Guess why? We're the first to have K-Marts, the first to have a Little Caesar's, and the very first to have a full-time manager that works a four-day schedule. A city manager should be visible and accessible to the residents and businesses as well as council and should lead by example. Does all other city employees work four days a week? If not, why does their leader work four days a week? What if our residents only work four days a week and could not pay our taxes? And we wouldn't be able to pay our workers of Garden City? What would happen? What values have this city manager added to our city in the almost two years he has been here? He should be concerned about making our city more presentable to the future residents and business. Main entrances from other cities make the first impressions to a newcomer seeing our city for the first time. Our four main entrances are Middlebelt and Cherry Hill, Ford and Inxter, Warren and Middlebelt, and Ford and Benoy. Council, mayor, residents, proud of the gateways? Are you proud of the gateways we have? And don't say the DDA. That's their responsibility, their DDA. That's outside of the DDA, just a mystery. As a real estate agent, this city manager should well be aware, since he is a real estate agent, and he probably works, he has an office building and an address. Is that why he works four days? Should we be well aware, shouldn't he be well aware of the effects of a curb appeal that attract new residents and businesses? City managers should look at ways to attract more youth and children, even single parents and younger couples to come to our city. Like I said before, I came to Garden City in nineteen sixty-two. It took me three months to move my family into Garden City. That's how demand the houses was. For the last two years, this guy has added no values at all to this city and everybody, and he's destroyed it, and there's never been any unity since he's been here because he works everyone against everyone. Okay? Has our city manager done things to get people to come to our city? If so, give me, name me one. Just name one. Does he try to find an answer to why residents are leaving our city? Go to the park. Should, he should be visible. He should go to the park, ask residents. Why does, do they always have to call and ask him? Why don't he go out? If they don't come to see him, why doesn't he go out? And find out what changes he could make to our city that will be more conducive to our loving and caring residents of the entire city, which enhance our growth and potential for new residents and businesses. I mean, what's he done for me? He's done nothing. This is the worst shape that this city has been in since I've been here, and I love this city. I love this city. I've done a lot of my time for free, gave a lot of money to this city. And for twenty-nine years, and this guy, he has destroyed everything that anybody else has worked for in this city in parks and wrecks, and they did it for free. They did it for free. Did it for free because they loved the city. You sat there, Ms. Squires, and say that he don't see nothing he's done wrong? I haven't seen anything he's done right. I haven't seen anything he's done for this city. He's not added nada value to any resident here in this city, not one. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dawkins?
Those folks are sitting up there, said they haven't seen anything that this city manager's done. If I, they evidently, they were asleep. And I saw you, I saw you sitting at that last meeting. When he come up, when Dave took the hat off of him for the move that he made, putting these people into that check-off, paying twenty percent of their healthcare. Now, they, I don't blame the city for letting him do that because he slipped up the council. Now, when he, he cost our taxpayers and our workers, he cost them money. If I understand right, what Dave said and what he did, he cost our workers money, he cost the city money. Now, if he had give these people due and timely notice, they would have had time to opt out of the healthcare program so they could have had a spouse working at another place that they could have got on their healthcare. Now, the way that I understand this, is the way General Motors did this. Once you pass this and do like it's been done now, it's gonna be one year before you have that opportunity again. And so, I don't know it, I don't know the rules on it for how they do that. I know how General Motors used to do that. Now, and not only that, I've said, I've seen now George Cordy, meeting after meeting, bring up stuff to him, and you could tell it went in one ear and out the other. And finally, he made some reports at this last meeting. Now, that old boy thinks he the boss, but I'm not here to tell you he's not. And if you folks want to let him be the boss, I'll go ahead, shame on you. I've heard Jim Kerwin get on him about this place up there at Ford Road and Merriman time and time and time again. Finally, he gave him an answer at the last meeting. Now, this, as I'm telling you, and I'm saying to you folks out there listening to the TV, now, you watch and you see who's representing you, and you say, you have seen some people there tonight. Now, know what that thing that runs up and down their back between their shoulder blades? They know that's what that is. And I would suggest, and if you folks don't want to buy, I buy it, I buy it for you. Buy some no-nods, keep it away, so you can see what's going on.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name's Linda Blizzard, I live on Helen Street. And from the sounds of it, your railroad makes this guy, and I agree with you, Mayor. You publicly say, he's not doing his job, and you give him a good report card. He's balanced our budget, has he not? Right? He's kept our fire, kept our police. Yes, we're suffering because we don't have the VPS guys. I mean, the water mains don't get fixed, the brakes don't get fixed fast. But they're doing the best they can. I think, we did pretty good. I think he did pretty good. If there's something else going on, why isn't it publicly brought up? Or why, I don't understand why you guys aren't taking him in and telling him what's wrong. I mean, that's only fair. It's like he's guilty. We're having the innocent tell the guilty. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Park?
Sharon Park, I'm three one nine six zero, Catherine, thirty-three. First of all, some people need to research what full-time employment means. I had an option of working four-day work weeks. Our nurses work three-day work weeks for thirty-six hours, that's full-time. We elected you, Mr. Kerwin, and Mr. Fetter, and I would like to know on what grounds. I want you to tell me, you can't sit there and not share with us what you know about Mr. McCleary that we don't know. I demand it, and I have a right to know that. Mr. McCleary has done a lot of good for this community. He has online the seat click-in fix. We filled it out. Within a couple of days, the problem was taken care of, and Mr. McCleary had emailed us to let us know it was taken care of. There is a lot of positive that he has done, and I want to know directly from your mouth what you are basing this on, because I have a right to know.
Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Mike Jones, Downing Street, Garden City. I agree with the previous speaker. I have no problem with the council making the decision, which is entirely within their jurisdiction, to hire or replace the city manager. But I have real problems with, the reason we're doing it is because we've lost confidence in him. Without any specifics about what their problems are. If they're not willing to get up and state exactly why they think this city manager has underperformed or mismanaged the city, then I have no respect for somebody who hide behind that.
Ms. Weisig?
City managers come and go. That's a way of the job. We've had twelve, fourteen here in the city. When my husband was elected to office, and Mayor, it was Mayor Breen and him, they got rid of the city manager for bad performance. That's all they need. And then they didn't even hire a city manager because the mayor and the council, and it was a divided council, four-three, a lot of fights. They did the work. They did the work, and they run this city. They put the first new housing in Garden City that was put in in twenty years. Everything was just, because we knew we were losing people, and we were wondering, how come we keep losing all our young people? The schools aren't closing. Well, maybe there's no, there's not adequate housing, so we put in beautiful Victoria Gardens. Lots of the section of people up here fighting all the time. And I, Gomer, I agree with you. I never thought I'd live to see that day. But what has happened is you leave everything to him. You say how overworked he is, how sure to help he is. You say we have an open-door policy. Why don't you, or you, or you, or anybody, call my husband, who's very astute in money manners of this city? He used to have a budget this big. If you went into that recreation department and you wanted to know how much he spent on toilet paper, he'd turn over the pages and he could tell you. There is nothing like this anymore in this city. I mean, I went to budget meetings, he had six pages. Department heads have budgets this big. And you are responsible for the city. You keep calling him your expert. You can take all the advice you want from him, but you just don't agree with everything he says. Some time or other, you have to take responsibility and not put it on his shoulders. He can't do everything. And it's really true that you can run a city without a city manager. I know we have, I never was for city manager form of government because it takes the vote away from the people and because it's very expensive. So you better step up to the plate.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Parton? Go ahead, ma'am.
Catherine Valeravy, James Street. I'd like to ask Mr. McCleary a question. Do you know why they're doing this?
I do, I do not know why. In fact, I just found out today that this was even going to be placed on the agenda.
Okay, so how can you decide to lay somebody off, to fire somebody, when they don't even know why? I mean, you, somebody asked if you wanted to give the reason why, and you clearly stated, no, you didn't want to say that. I mean, I think everybody in this room had, I mean, if you've got some information that you want to share with us, I mean, you should calmly share it, and I'm sure he would appreciate it. Most especially, Ms. Lynch said that the performance review was above average or between average and above.
That's not correct, by any means.
Mr. Kerwin?
Yes, sir.
She has the floor right now.
Well, all I can go with by what Mrs. Lynch said.
Ma'am?
Okay, so like, if you guys held a performance review and you came up with between average and above average, then why are suddenly you want, why suddenly do you want to fire this gentleman? When he doesn't even know why? I mean, to me, that's the height of, really, a big problem here. I mean, this gentleman should know why.
Would you like to ask me, someone that was?
Mr. Kerwin? Mr. Kerwin, you have your opportunity under public, under council comments. This is public comments, this is the public time.
Very good, sir, thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Mr. Parton?
Carrie Parton, on Catherine Street, Garden City. Mr. Kerwin, you scared the hell out of me.
Thank you.
You act up like you don't know what you want to do with that motion. You're fumbling around. Hold it, I have the floor right now, sir, okay? You work for me, all right? You act like you don't know what you're talking about up here. You're dealing with a man's livelihood and his reputation here. Do you understand that? And you can't even give this man the common courtesy of telling him why you want him fired? Can? Can you?
You're gonna scare me by yelling at me?
It's my floor. Mr. Fetter, I've agreed with a lot of things that you've said, but I don't agree with you here. I do not agree with you on this. Jody, you've had it in for this guy ever since I can remember. Mr. Cordy, I don't know how that got to you. I don't agree, I don't agree with this at all. Throwing this guy under the bus, he's done a great job. None of you would want his job, none of you. Nobody out in this audience would want it, I know that. If you're the puppets for these few, five or six people out here, shame on you. Shame on you. You're not speaking for me, and you're not speaking for a lot of people in this community. I say it's wrong, wrong! Let this man know why you're bringing him on the carpet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Cowan?
Apparently, I was late, a few minutes late. I missed something here in the beginning. Few things. I missed my opportunity to come up. Ms. Lynch was talking about the, well, first of all, I do agree. I think you guys deserve to at least explain to us and him why he's losing his job. I mean, that's just pure respect. The fact that, whether we go five minutes or three minutes, I think, at least from my perspective, from home and here, I think the quality of time up here.
Your comments right now are just on the removing of the city manager.
We're not at the public comment yet. I apologize.
This is comments just on removing the city manager.
Okay, I apologize. I think he deserves to understand why he's being fired. I'll come back on, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buckner?
May I ask the city manager a question?
Well, severity of this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow you to.
Why? Oh, okay, that's okay. Do you feel your salary is worth one and a half, Parton? You don't have to answer that. So let's see.
I'm sorry, can you re, could you repeat the question?
Parton?
Could you repeat the question?
Do you feel that your salary that you're getting is worth one and a half, Parton, salary? That this city is lacking?
One and a half?
Fireman?
Firemen?
Yeah.
Firemen.
Firemen.
I don't believe my salary is worth one and a half, firemen, but...
Let's see, they make roughly a hundred thousand a year. You make roughly one forty-one, one fifty-two, five thousand car allowance. That's about one and a half. And we're lacking four. Four firemen. So which is more important? Our safety of our children, senior citizens, single parents, or a city manager that doesn't do his job? And hasn't been? So let's go back here, discussion. So let's see, the mayor says he attends a few events in Garden City. Well, he can afford to. Five thousand dollars in gas money a year. Hey, pay me that, I'll come and pick you up in my Escalade. Play you some country music? You like rock and roll? I do. Mrs. Lynch, Mrs., Mr. Walker, Mrs. Squire. Go back and look, they always vote the same. This is no surprise. Mrs. Lynch, you're on vacation. Didn't know what was going on about the review. Well, join the crowd. The public out here don't know. We have a right to know. You go in closed sessions, you come out here, none of them. We're left in the dark. Now this Miss Buck gets a word from you or somewhere, writes it in the paper. Then we make it to know. And then we know the truth? Because we know that paper is for City Hall. It's not for the public. Because many a letter's out sent and only one been published. City Hall provided previously leadership with only three staff workers and the population was a lot larger. So, okay, let's examine some things here. In two years, you've gotten a contract from council.
Don't we speak if you're at the podium, please?
With the likes of Mr. Walker and Mr. Lynch who earns over a hundred and fifty-two dollars a year, a hundred and fifty-two thousand per year, that includes benefits, approximately five thousand car allowance. Being a non-resident, doesn't have to pay property tax, costs us another two or three thousand per year in property. In the meantime, you're sucking their tax dollars all the way back to Fernville. You get a twenty percent raise by closing City Hall on Friday, has a four-day work week, and has a three-day weekend every week. And now, we don't only have a part-time city manager, we have a part-time City Hall. Its subordination by reporting late to council on the issue, they have asked for it, and then you turn on, you belittle it. And mayor, you call yourself a leader? No. You can lease a city manager, and I went out and researched it, for seventy thousand dollars. As I said, his salary can pay for one and a half, Parton. Let me give you a little bit, hint. Thursday headline. Miss Buck, I hope you can get this. Fearless Ford got their act together.
Mr. Moller?
I barged a few months ago, if you remember, about what would happen, and how you was gonna get attacked. And I told you to have a pit scan, I hope you got it. You guys are wrong, you know you're wrong. I'm a fireman, no reason. And I probably lose some friends, I hope, I hope I can disagree with my friends sitting back there and not lose them. But they're wrong too. You can't just fire a man for no goddamn reason. It smells like a chicken and it ain't the part that goes in his beak either. And y'all know it. Come on now, stand up and be a man, I'll, I'll let you, and women. You look better than this. You got a reason? What is it? You should've told him first, that's the first person you should've told right there. You want to be fired, then what the reason is? You're too eager for character, you can go tell him that. You're too eager for character, tell everybody out here that. Don't do it. You give a reason and then you do it next time. If you got a reason, come back in two weeks and fire you. Tell him and then you can tell us. And you come back in two weeks and you fire him. Let's go play this chicken shit game here. It's ridiculous. Like I said, if I lose my friends, and I hope I don't, I lack them. But I disagree with them. If we can't disagree to stay friends, then shame on all of us too. But remember, I told you about three or four months ago what was gonna happen to you? And I told you that when I said, then, you're telling us what we need to hear, not what we want to hear. And that's the problem you have right now. And long as you keep telling us what we need to hear, and I hope to God you do, instead of what we want to hear, like the past city managers did, and they were good people, and that's fine. But they wasn't city managers and this city wasn't running very good either. I wasn't the last city manager either. And I know everybody liked him. I liked him too. But he messed the city up, got rid of your library. It could've been safe, but everybody liked the guy and that's fine. Because he told you what you wanted to hear. And this guy is not telling you what you want to hear. He's telling you, boneheads, what you need to hear and you better wake up and listen. And in two weeks, if you got a reason, give a reason and in two weeks, bring it up, fire.
Anybody else? Mr. King?
Good evening, mayor, good evening, council. As I was watching this on TV, I don't like to come to these meetings anymore because they're too disruptive. But I could not stand to stay at home and watch this gentleman get crucified. There's been movement out to try to get this guy for over a year. I heard Mr. Goings talk about the council, the unity council. Well, my question is, whatever happened to the unity council? I suspect that what has happened is that there have been meetings on the side and they've decided to do something to get rid of this job. I may not be Mr. McClary's strongest supporter, but I would not be a part of his assassination either. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Carwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
No.
Councilmember Cordy?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
No.
Mayor Walker?
No.
Your honor, if I could just make a comment. First of all, I appreciate the opportunity to serve Garden City. Garden City is facing a lot of very difficult issues. We've gotten past many of them, but there are still challenges on the horizon. I look forward to the public hearing on September twenty-fourth. In the meantime, it being suspended, I will spend a little time with my son before he leaves for the Marines. And I, I just want to say how much I appreciate my department heads and all the hard-working city employees who work for the city. They're a great team to work with. And, and I couldn't do what I do without the great work that they do. And I just want to say to all of them how much I appreciate everything that they do. So with that, I wish you the best of luck and I will see you on September twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. McClary. Okay, this time we'll move to public comments. These are for items that were not on the agenda. There's a five-minute timeout. Anybody want to speak under public comments? Mr. Wysocki?
Mayor? One second.
What do you got?
Just want to know if you want Allison to go handle this real quick. Get a copy and give one to Mr. McClary.
Just let her take it tomorrow during business hours.
Yeah, she can take it to him during business hours.
He won't be here.
She can drive it to him.
Will you tell me when my time starts?
Go ahead, Mr. Wysocki.
I apologize, I just want Mr. Carwin to speak. Remember, you already mentioned the chair's favoritism in carrying out his duties at, at table. In my support of citizen expression, I spoke in behalf of what I believe to be the rights of people to be here and to express their views, public views. I've been asked to leave under duress and strain a couple times in the last several months. And the mayor warns us every time, behave in a good manner, especially toward council. Two of the residents just spoke within a few minutes. One of them directed remarks to Mr. Carwin. Remarks that were loud, two and three times loud. If I would've said that, Chief Murray would've been escorting me out the door again. No question about it. Is there any question in your mind at the table? No. That's what I spoke in regard to freedom to express your views at the table here. And thank God, it appears that we're going to prevail again. Taking with euphoria at some of the discussion I had tonight, I'm going to depart with what I had comments on and just express a couple things. One of those I'm going to express, I was going to speak under community announcements, but fearful if I got into a little history, I might be tossed out again. I thought, well, it isn't worth having to try to have a mayor apologize for the people first contacted you in the meantime. Anyway, I want to announce to Garden City residents who graduated from Fortson High School in the years nineteen forty-six and forty-seven, that we're having our sixty-fifth and sixty-sixth annual class luncheons on September the thirteenth, a Thursday, from twelve noon to four P.M. at the Stip Post two thirty-two. And that's at Warren and Military to See the Telegraph. And it's adjacent to the, in Hedrick Cemetery. If you are a resident of Garden City or if not, but you graduated from those two years and you haven't heard about it, call Earl Berry. Earl Berry, three one three, two seven seven, seven one three zero for more details. Now, I tied that in with the community announcement just as I tried to tie it in last year. The symbolic gesture of the roll of tissue paper with Garden City Youth Association. I wasn't successful in doing that because I was prevented from continuing on. But I was going to cover fifty-eight years of Garden City Youth History. Fifty-eight years. I thought it was worth mentioning. And tied it in with another event that says, Mr. McClary's no longer here, I'm going to just pass through. But I had my own reason. It wasn't folly that I showed up and was going to make that presentation. There was a lot of thought given to it. It was no rambling on, as it's been put in paper. But anyway, my tie-in is that Garden City and Dearborn-Fortson have a very close history. I'm not sure anybody here knows the bond that they have.
In thirty seconds, Mr. Wysocki.
Pardon me?
You have thirty seconds.
Oh, Christmas. One of the bonds is that years ago, the kids were bust to Fortson. The most notable being Bob Griffin, a Garden City kid who became an all-star football player and later a United States senator. Also, and I think to go over on this, because...
Your time is up, Mr. Wysocki.
It's about the death, death of some of the...
Mr. Wysocki, your time is up.
The death of some of the Garden City kids who were being...
Mr. Wysocki, your time is up. I'm being polite as I can be with you. Your time is up.
History.
Mr. Wysocki?
The council has the right to...
Mr. Wysocki, you need to sit down.
History in the making and nobody's interested in hearing.
Mr. Wallace?
Mayor, as a taxpayer of the city...
State your name.
Buddy Wallace, Garden City. Been here since nineteen sixty-two. I detest the way that you let the gentleman that here get up and yell at a councilman when I can't even say a word back here.
You were just as loud, Mr. Wallace.
Huh?
You were just as loud when you were up here.
You were screaming at him.
You were just as loud, as long as there's no name-calling, you were just as loud.
Whatever.
Yes, you were.
Whatever. You know the film that you called Channel Four Two? It's on national, nationwide television. You know what it says? Government is the bully of the town. Hey, and it does, it's fact. Go have it played in all the cities. But anyway, getting back to the message that you brought last year, I mean, last council meeting, I told you two weeks before about the MCL law. That's Michigan-Paw Law, okay? You need to talk to the attorney before you make statements because I don't think you've had any law at all in college. It appears that you haven't. You said, made this statement that, that he is allowed to live anywhere he wants to. And you knew that before he signed the contract. And he knew it before he signed the contract. Mr. Walker, law one oh one. If you know something that is wrong and you sign and agree to obey the charter, you have given up your right to let, ask your lawyer, ask any lawyer you want. You have given up your right when you signed that with no exclusions. Law one oh one. If you want to know what the law, the Act two twelve stands for, go to MCL fifteen, six oh one, six oh two, six oh three. They'll define, six oh one gives you the definitions of everything. That is where the act came from, Mr. Walker. Learn your details before you make statements. You were wrong when you said that because he made the statement that he knew before he signed the contract and you too, and it was in Harvey's contract that he had exclusion. The mayor or whoever signed, Walker, I mean, Dave Harvey to the contract, made the exclusion. That was saying. But even though if he didn't, you got to remember two things. He is a contract worker. He is a contract worker, okay? Without that exclusion, he cannot live anywhere he wants to. Okay? If you want to know, you want to look it up. If you don't want to ask the lawyer, Chrome? Hey, go to Henry Ford Library in Dearborn. Pull out some of the law books and go through them. That, that MCL law is only about eight, nine hundred pages, sir. And you ain't going to get any information just by saying, going to Act two twelve and reading it. It's not there. That's why they call it the Michigan-Paw Law for. And it's under MCL fifteen dot six oh one, six oh two, and six oh three. I'll repeat it again, okay? How, how in the world can you say that this guy's not breaching his contract when he's accepting pay from all the taxpayers out here, all the taxpayers for driving to the city? His car allowance never got cut and you're the person that said, and I can go back and run the tape for you, he is based on coming to Garden City for five days a week and that's what we allotted that for. Also, I can Jalen Lynch and Al Briscoe and another person negotiate his contract for five days a week, two hundred and sixty-five days a year. Hey, I've worked sometimes, Mr. Walker, and if your salary at Ford Motor Company, you're not just there for eight hours.
you're not just there for eight hours. You're there for whatever they need you for. I have got through doing 12 hours at a place and take a jet and go to another place. I was away from home for 24 hours sometimes at work. I didn't get paid overtime. I was salary. I expected it. But I loved my job. Okay, so don't, don't, I just think, Mr. Walker, that guy led you down the wrong road. He took, like the governor said, you took your ducks to the wrong market with that guy. You're not, you're not a leader up there when you let this what happened to a councilperson. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Goins?
Governor, this is a great, great night for Garden City. And Mayor, this is a good night and a great night for you. You may not agree with it now. You wait a few days and you see the difference. And how the people are talking about that they, the people didn't let this guy know what he was being fired for. He had been told time, time, and time again. And like I said before, there must've been some people asleep. But I want you four people to know, they voted that yes vote. I am real proud of you, and you hang in there, and you done a good job for Garden City.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Weisack?
Well, I'm gonna talk when I got my five minutes. Mayor, we speak, then you get the last word. And on occasion, when you get the last word, you refer to something I said. Three times, I think, on different occasions. I have never heard you do that to one of the men. And as a woman, I will not be singled out by you.
Mr. Wallace, please be quiet. Mrs. Weisack has the floor.
You stated after you talked, I said, you said, "We're not Detroit. You're not Conway and Co-Patriot." You said you made that statement because people called you crooks. I want council to know that I never called anyone on that council crooks, ever, ever. Over at the senior center, those men are saying, "Oh, they're all crooks," all the time. So, big deal. Everybody does that to politicians. Goes with the territory. Can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen. I never called anyone a crook. At the center, when I heard that statement, I would say, "They're not crooks. They're not smart enough to be crooks." So, I took, gave you a compliment and then took it away from you. It's no big deal that people call politicians crooks. Everybody does. And probably a lot of times with good reason. You're politicians. That's what you are. You have to take that. When you're sitting at that table, things are sad. I have also called, I'm gonna tell you all my sins. I have also called Mr. Walker King Walker. The guys over at the senior center, we have one sitting on the corner, they're very sharp. They're 98 years old. That man is so sharp. I said, I call him King Walker, and they said, "You better be careful. He might have your head." I said, "Oh, yeah. Take me to the guillotine." Doesn't bother me at all that you're a king. Not at all. What does bother me is he's made you his subjects. I'm glad tonight that people stood up and are not his subjects. He is not a king. You may think he is, and I think he got abused too, but that's neither here nor there. I also said, one more sin I have, that they never answer any questions. Why? Because I think they don't know the answers. I get a little smart mouth, too. Me and my senior friends, we have a good time over there. You know, no good economist believes in raising taxes during hard times. That's just a fact. Mr. Nead came to council, leading chastising residents on speaking up. He stated that the mayor has been excellent to him and his son. Helped his son business, is treated very well when he goes to City Hall. I'm glad he's treated well and you helped his son in business. The statement, what I had done to me, after a council meeting, I was out in the hall there, and two female employees attacked him. They screamed, they yelled, they were in my face. I was apologizing to them. I had no idea what I said that got them so riled up. They got pushed out the door and they came back in and did some more. And believe me, I was scared, and I don't scare very often. I raised seven kids on a dime. Put them all to college. It was a terrible incident. So, some people get treated really well, Mrs. Mayor Protem.
30 seconds, Mrs. Weisack.
And other people are spit on. And it's not fair. It's not fair as a woman. There's no women who talk at this meeting hardly ever. And you said that people are scared to come to the meeting. You think they're scared of us? No, they're scared of being bullied by you people up there. You better start changing your thinking, too. I will not ever let that happen to me again, because the next time, they, I'll let them push me.
Mrs. Weisack, your time is up. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm a big enough man to come up here and apologize for raising my voice to you, Mr. Kerwin.
I accept. Thank you, sir.
But you still scare the hell out of me. All four of you do. And I don't like the path we're going down, getting rid of the city manager. And if this costs us any more money than it has already, by way of any lawsuit, all four of you are in my sights. I'm telling you, if you have any political ambitions, they'll be gone. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can I just remind everybody to please state your name when you come up to the podium? Thank you.
Ron Pummel. I live at 3222 on Hennessy Street. We have to do that at school board meetings. That's my wife and I attend. Just real quick, and this, I guess, is to Ms. Lynch, if you're redoing the motion. I guess I would really encourage you to separate the three-minute rule from all the others. I believe, and you've been watching tonight, there isn't a single person on that side of the table and this side of the table that do not agree that there should be civility, that there's, you know, all the other things that are in there. I do believe, however, there isn't a single person on this side that wants their two minutes taken away. You know, again, our school board, unfortunately, and my wife and I were highly against it, they did it anyway. I think, I really believe, as elected officials, it is your duty to encourage us to do our duty as civilians of this city and these United States, is to encourage us to come up here, to want us to voice our opinions. Because these, to my knowledge, most none of these folks know me. So, they don't even know what's in my head. But if I get up here and I speak for that all of five minutes, I could say something that sparks something, and they can't get that if I'm emailing you. You know, as an educator in this city for 25 years, I get email. I get it. I don't like it, but I get it. It's a great way to communicate if you don't really wanna communicate as far as face-to-face. We have lost the ability to even communicate because of this electronic age. And I'm not, you know, I don't wanna go back, I don't wanna worry everyone, but I'm just saying. This is, I think this is a great thing. You know, I've seen in hostile council meetings, you know, deemed hostile, anyway, you know, that this is just, the students, you know, we don't even want students to come here to see what goes on. Folks, this is, this is America. This is where government, this is where it happens right here. And I don't, and again, I don't think, and I'm not advocating, arguing, fighting, yelling, and screaming. What I am advocating and encouraging, not advocating, encouraging, is government. You guys have an opinion, we have an opinion, you listen to it, then hopefully you'll listen to it. And if you don't, you get to vote anyway. Again, we don't have a single vote out here. We're just encouraging you in our five minutes, twice a month, to listen to us. So, when you do the motion, you know, I would like, I would like to support those that support civility, and I would like to find out who wants to stifle civic duty. That's what I'd like. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Mike Jones. I've reconsidered an opinion or a position, and I think that it'd be a mistake for you to limit the comments to three minutes. I would favor keeping it at five.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I hope when it comes around to the comments from one of you four, that you will at least tell a reason why you done it. It's not gonna change my opinion about the way you done it. But at least maybe we'll have a reason why you done it, 'cause the way you done it is low-down, dirty. Without telling him, without talking to all the council people, that's just a dirty, low-down, sneaky, outdoor tactic. We're not in Chicago. So, at least one of you have enough guts to tell everybody why you done it. You should've talked to him and told him, too. And you're pretty well for doing it that way. I had a high opinion of all of you. And this is gonna lower it some for you, I'll tell you that right now. Because none of you got enough nerve to tell the man why, or to tell us why. And hopefully, under the comments, one of you got enough backbone to stand up and say why. Thank you.
Mr. Buckner, have you been up yet on public comments?
No.
Come on up.
Al Buckner. I'm reminded of biblical sayings, "Enjoy the night, for your joy will come in the morning." Just that joy tonight came eight hours early. Mr. Walker, you want to add to the insult that's already been given to us of a mention in previous meetings that to turn off the cameras caused some of the citizens were playing up to the camera. Well, you know what? You're right. I'm gonna agree with you. Sounds like all the positive-speaking citizens that speak in your behalf of the council and you. Mr. Walker, you're trying to silence the opposition. Just another form of Hitlerism to silence the negative force against weak leadership. No wonder force teaching the kibbutz to work. You don't know much about time management to me. I've never approached this body of council making racial slurs. I've never approached this council wanting to deal with the city for a favor from Mr. Walker. I don't bring my friends out here to speak on my behalf. I come on my own. My mission is to speak out openly, as long as I permit it to, on how weak a mayor you are and how you have your own Robert rules. I've only asked for true leadership, which has been missing from you. I've asked for an open council. Instead, we get behind closed ass meetings that are rigged before they're happened or armed to us other council members to go with your three already vote, Walker, Squires, and Lynch. And then the publics are left uninformed as what took place. You know what? I personally don't care if you turn the cameras off. It would not silence my voice. And the citizens know by now the voice of this blue-eyed, southern gentleman who will speak out on poor leadership from the mayor's seat. Oh, that doesn't matter. For we know that if you need more money, what you will do? Go for another millage and put more burden onto our senior citizens and our single parents. And speaking of that, let's look back what you've done. Under your term, which really you had no opposition, 3.5 mil, library millet, school millet, special assessment for trash, another special sentence for street lighting, and yet our fire department is one man short for a full house fire run. Hope your house don't catch on fire, and you have only four. But you're gonna have to wait till the fifth one comes so they can come inside. Really, we need four firemen. But somehow or another, the city act like you can't afford it. But yet, they ask for a 3.5 mil, which everybody knows that I was against, 'cause I didn't like how it was handled. All you were doing was taking the 3.5 mil, giving it to the fire police, then taking back the money that you already granted to them and putting it back in the general fund. That's like taking money out of the left hand and putting it to the right. Our street system is a disgrace. If you don't believe it, go down Hennessy Street and look at the patch job that Mr. Barnes' department is doing. Our sports system has come up short end. They have to come up with their own money. Now, my kids went all through school. My daughter played cheer, was a cheerleader for 10 years. There were years I had to get to come up with $900. That was her dream. I found the money. But there's parents out there that don't have it, especially in these days. As I was saying, our sports system has come up with their own money in order for them to play sports and buy their own toilet paper. And if you really dig into it, they have to come up with it so they can keep up city property and pay for the utilities. That's a disgrace. And you do this under your leadership? You make our kids go out here and sell pizza dough, cookie dough, so they can pay for the toilet paper and the utilities to play sports. Sad, just sad. Evidently, your kids don't play sports. I wanna look at some of the things that you've done. Let's examine the sad happenings in our city.
You have 30 seconds, Mr. Buckner.
Mr. Walker goes on TV, get front space, space, front page space from the local paper. He looks out, talk about people don't wanna come here, they're scared to, 'cause their time is limited. They're afraid of getting removed, like we've had extinguished senior citizens, 83-year-old, get out of here. This city is a nonprofit business, one that should gain by any financial wealth from our tax dollars.
Mr. Buckner, your time is up.
Be open and candid with the people. Can't wait for the 24.
Mr. King? Hello, my name is Dick King. I guess I've heard the history of the world, parts one, two, and three tonight. I'm not sure what relevance any of that has to do. Mayor Walker, I didn't know that you supported the, you pushed through the school millet or the library millet, and darn if you did. I have no idea how that happened. I thought that some of the citizens here who are talking about managing money, that manage budgets in excess of $20 million, that had over 120 employees in three different unions working for them, like I have. But I guess maybe they have so they can speak more intelligently on it. I've heard a lot of anecdotal information tonight. None of it makes any sense to me. I am in favor of the five-minute rule. The school board went to the cameras off, and three-minute rule was a disaster. And as far as Mr. McClary goes, you all have rated him, you've given him reviews. You should be able to produce those reviews as to why he was failing. And under the context of those rules, you should be able to either discharge him or keep him on. And that are, those are the only conditions that I can see that are reasonable, and you can substantiate and stand high. Other than that, I think you're failing in the duties of your job. All of you were elected by the people to represent them. And if you summarily discharge Mr. McClary for no reason, then you're not doing it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Cowler?
Sorry. I was a little emotional earlier. I lost my place here. I would agree with everything Mr. King just said. You know, I sit here and I get angry in person. I know how angry I get at home. I know how angry I get at home, because I know I'm not speaking for just myself. There's quite a few people that I speak to in the city, I'm pretty involved in the community. It's like a treadmill. The council meetings have become like a treadmill. It's the same five people saying the same things every week, and most of them are negative. For grown men to sit in the audience and mock people, to come up here and tell every one of you guys that voted against or for this that, you know, your political career is on hold after this meeting or whatever, I think this, I really think it's ridiculous, okay? I think we need to do, like I said, whether you keep it three or five minutes, I think it's not the quantity of time, but the quality of time. If you people wanna put your time and effort into positive regarding the city, come up here and say it. If you wanna call any one of these people, I've done it, I've emailed them, I've called them, I've never had an issue getting ahold of any one of these people. I don't know what your phones are doing, what your computers are doing, but I appreciate all you responding to my emails, my phone calls. I see quite a few of you in the community a lot. You've never turned me down in a conversation, so I personally appreciate it, and I really hope that the people can start bringing more positive to this podium.
Thank you. Mr. Tripp.
You know, I can't believe what's going on. I've been in the city for thirty-one years. I'm a volunteer, I'm a cancer survivor. And this city, what this city did for the relay for life, to raise money for Alice, we started at forty thousand, forty-four thousand, eighty-eight thousand, a hundred thousand, we got a hundred and twenty-one, then we dropped to seventy thousand. This city is together. I can't believe all this talk. You're always, these people are talking all against us. I never had no problems, Dick. I had a problem with, happened in a council meeting, I set up a meeting with the mayor. He seen me, I talked to him for an hour, told him what my feelings were, and ran in. The mayor went and talked to all of me, and long ago, I've been with other city managers. This man here, I'm on the aging commission, we had questions about the seniors at the center. He came to our meeting, we had somewhere, we had some new members on the board, he came to our meeting. Not one piece of paper, nothing. We asked him questions, we had seven, eight questions. He asked them, answered them off the top of his head. I got no respect for that man, and I could see him anytime I want. I don't have any problems seeing him. I'm nobody. I am Dick Tripp. I've been in this city for thirty-one years, and I can't understand what's going on. Believe me, it upsets me.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Parton.
Um, just real quick, I was at the last council meeting, and a certain resident had, was throwing some daggers at me, and I just wanted to inform him that I am not the council sergeant-at-arms. I am here as a citizen in support of my council when they are speaking on my behalf, and I have no intentions of calling out anybody or having arguments with them in the hallway, but I have the right to express my concerns and have a conversation at a public park. I feel that I can say what I want to to another resident without being called out in front of council, in front of everybody. And my name is Cheryl Parton, P-A-R-T-I-N, and I am not the lady, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we will move to council comments. Ms. Bettis, you have anything tonight? No? Mr. Kerwin?
Yes, Mayor, I do. And this is regarding the comments from Mr. Coller, Mr. Buckner, Mr. and Mrs. Parton, and there was another lady, I didn't even mention her name. I apologize if, because obviously you folks don't know the way the system does work. This is the way it works. That's why we've had, I believe, close to sixteen city managers since we've had this form of government. This is the way it works. That's the way it's done. This was an example of how it's done. Rather than publicly embarrass Mr. McClary, that's why I said nothing at that time. And to Mrs. Lynch, I believe she was on vacation or she was away, so I'm not blaming her, but she wasn't at the closed-door meeting. I was. I'm not gonna discuss what went on, but I will tell you, his last performance, he was told to improve, I believe by the entire council. He has a, I don't even wanna say the words I'm thinking, but a very poor review. That's not everything, but just to let you know, this is the system, this is the way it works. And that's all I have to say, just so you know something. Thank you, Mayor. Oh, excuse me, I do have one more, actually two more items. Mr. Barnes, is that clear? I had the occasion today to have a call from a lady that was on Box Street, east of Middle Belt. I'm not sure how far east, but there was branches hanging, and she knocked, she had a, what do you call it, carrier? Car carrier? It knocked right off of her car, so they must've been hanging down quite a bit. And last week, I talked to two businessmen in the industrial sub on Block West of Meriman, and I guess there's several branches hanging, limbs of branches hanging down the middle of the road. So, maybe you could look into that, and that's all I have here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fetter?
Yeah, I have a few things. Some of the comments full of emotion, I understand it's an emotional thing that happened, but you really have no right to know. And the reason I say that is, it's his personal work record, his reputation on the line. So, it will be taken care of him. Based on his response to council, it can become public. If, when you're at work, and something happens to you, your management team doesn't go out on the floor and start discussing with everybody why, what happened to you, or why it happened? This is being done slowly, correctly, and the way it's supposed to happen, out of respect for Darwin and anybody else involved in the process. I can say I have met with him consistently on what my dislikes and issues have been. I've done it openly. Someone commented on my last criticism of him. I have done it privately, I will speak only for myself. I'm not any quieter behind doors than I am in front of the door. So, I understand you may not know everything that is going on, because you weren't meant to. In an instance like this, we don't consult and take a survey from the citizens on how they feel, and then base our decision on the survey. We take a stand, and we come up with reasons to take that stand. I also wanna let you know that my decision to vote the way I did tonight was not based on anything anybody has ever said when they come up here to the podium. It was a detriment to my decision-making process, because I knew people would use that as a reason saying, they've gotten to me, they've bought me, Fetter's an idiot and can't think for himself, whatever it might be. None of the reasons, where he lives, his salary, none of that was in my decision-making process that caused the vote for the suspension today, and that's what this is. It's a suspension. It could turn into a termination, at this point is a suspension. So I wanna let you know that you can say what you may, but feel confident that I informed him as much as I could. He disagreed with me and voiced it, I disagreed with him and I voiced it. I also wanna let you know some of the things that goes on behind doors. Two, three months ago, I sent an email out to the mayor and council, letting them know I was gonna make a motion on something, and if they had any questions, call me, so I can do what some of you have suggested. Inform everybody, discuss it, so that we're prepared when the meeting starts. A member from this board called the attorney and discussed me violating the Freedom of Information Act and possible removal from the council because of an email that said, and I'm almost quoting, "I'm making a motion of, if you have any questions, call me, Dave." I had two people call me, okay? I'm new on the council. It wasn't the first threat of violating I've had since I've been here. It was the second. This one went to the attorney. The attorney told me I was within my right. He said to me, quit putting things in writing, watch what you say and who you say it to, okay? I've kept this to myself. This is something I dealt with, and I'm over it. Business has gone on, but these are things that people, when they get up there, I don't blame you for some of the comments. I really don't. I don't wanna blame you for the emotions and the things that are said. I don't expect you to even trust me, but if the opportunity exists, and we're given the opportunity, I will be expanding on what's happening, but you have to, we met with, I was one of the three that met with the attorney. We did it to make sure we did it correctly and did not violate anybody's rights. That's why it was done. There were three of us, because we could not have a fourth. Anybody on this council can call me at any time and ask why I did something or what's going on, and I'll tell them, but with my past experience, I have cut off communication with most of the people on this council. I can't risk being brought up a third time. I can't do it. I wanna fill out my two years. If not, that's fine too. But there's so much going on behind that people don't realize, and people up here seem to forget some of these things, people back there don't know, so we're gonna hear a lot of comments. It's expected, it's understood, and I appreciate it. I really do. I could end up being the worst thing since spam, okay? In the end of this, and that's okay. I'm doing what I feel is right for the city, and not for any other reason. But we're gonna go through this process, that's all I'm gonna say about it. Keep giving us our comments. It sounds like Darwin's gonna want a public meeting, and at that point, we'll address it then. But that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Squires?
Yeah, I have a few things here. Mr. Wallace, and you have called my cell phone, and I have talked to you when you liked me. I don't know that you've called me since, I have not gotten any messages on my, but I've talked to you twice, I know that. Mr. Buckner, I vote my heart. When I vote on something, I vote my heart, and what I feel is best for the community. I don't vote for it because Mrs. Lynch voted for it, or because the mayor voted for it. You know, I ran on a common sense platform, and that's what I'm doing, trying to represent the citizens of this city to the best of my ability. Also, someone mentioned, is it gonna cost more money by the city manager going? Yes, it is. It is gonna cost more taxpayer money. We told the hearing, I know there's gonna be a public hearing on this, and I do hope the public comes out and sees how he was railroaded, and I'm still very disappointed that I wasn't given the common courtesy of a phone call. I'm my own person. I don't go running off with, you know, other people on the council all the time, or talk to other people on the council. You know, why you felt you couldn't let me know what was going on is to getting blindsided. And when you did that the last time, I was one of those that called you to find out what was going on. On a lighter note, I would like to wish good luck and Godspeed to my grandson, Zachary Squires, and to Shane McClary. They're both leaving for military basic training on September eleventh, and I'm so proud of them both. And Zach, I love you. Also, my hats off to the American Legion Riders, Post 396, for the outstanding representation they did for our city for the legacy run that came through last Wednesday. The committee worked tirelessly for months in preparation for this huge event, and I heard today that when the riders got to Indianapolis at the end of their ride, they were still talking how they felt so welcomed here in Garden City, and what, you know, the citizens on the side of the road, the Legion, the dinner, the lunch, everything. So, thank you, Garden City, for those that came out. Thank you to our fire department, and I believe it's the Wayne Fire Department, for their tribute to our veterans that were on that run. And thank you Chief Murray and the Police Department for the police escort to get them safely to and from the expressway. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dodge?
Couple items. First, to Cheryl, congratulations on your retirement. I wish you didn't have to leave the city. You have been a valuable asset, and the only thing I think I would've added to her certificate of appreciation is that she approached everything with love and kindness, and everything was approached with her heart, and I know I'm gonna miss you. It's been a pleasure, a pleasure working with you. For Mr. Barnes, Harrison Road, reconstruction, school starting. It's a school route, Lathers actually is the pickup point for a lot of the kids that live in that area that go to Farmington, plus it's the pre-K and K school. How are we going to work out traffic situations, rerouting of the students walking to and from? I know you guys have probably already had discussions on these.
The school system was notified way back in last month about that Harrison would be tied up, and they should adjust their schedule accordingly. I reconfirmed that again this week, last week with the school systems. The reason we went the one way was so we'd avoid the south side of Marquette. That's the reason one-way traffic is going north versus south, so we wouldn't turn in right adjacent to the schools area. We'll work the contract like we always do during the peak period of when the students arrive and when they depart. Sidewalks, we don't have, if we move to one sidewalk, they'll have to use the other side where there is sidewalk, as far as the west side.
Okay. You probably don't know this, if the schools have notified the parents of the kids in that area, of course...
I have. I have no idea what they've done.
I know in the past, well, we've done huge projects. Everybody's involved, and we've all worked hand in hand. I mean, the bus drivers have been amazing getting in and out of some of the things that we've put them through. Just make sure that if we see any kids that are struggling, we need to make sure that we're on our toes, so we don't want any child hurt out there or lost because they don't know an alternate route, or, because you are talking kids walking to bus drop-offs. Unless the schools have a new drop-off, I don't know if they do or not yet.
They have it before me. I made sure last week, to be honest, that I sent it to the superintendent, because I wouldn't get response, that they got the latest and greatest information. So, I've given them warning way back last month, they're probably gonna be tied up until mid-November, avoid that area, judge the route accordingly. And then reconfirmed that again last week, and I followed up with a lot, even an email to the superintendent to make sure they got the word.
Okay, thank you, Jack. And then also, with school starting very soon, it's just around the corner, all of us that have been going to and from work, pulling in and out of driveways, just remember the kids are out there walking again in the morning, in the evening. If you see something suspicious or funny, make a note of it, call our police department. Just keep your eyes and ears... Just keep your eyes and ears open, and remember when backing out the driveway, little ones might be behind you, so. And I hope the kids have a wonderful school year. Um, now, there was a comment made tonight that I have had it in for Mr. McClary since the day he started here. He wouldn't have started here if I hadn't pushed so hard to hire him. Just to correct you, and you can ask anyone on this council and the past council. And that's all I have.
Mr. Cording?
Uh, just got several items here. Regarding the northwest corner of Ford Merriman, um, what's the status? If we could follow up, somebody follow up on that with the DTE and the demolition of that, of the gas station? I know there was something in the, in the report here the city manager gave to us, and it said something about that he was trying to work with, um, our city, trying to get DTE to help get the finalized. But I thought, we were told that a new owner, it wasn't the same owner of the Shell gas station. So, I don't know if it is or isn't. I just want to know, what's the status of the northwest corner of, you know, Ford Merriman coming down? Another item I brought up once before, and I was told that it was too early because the year wasn't over, so I'm going to raise it up again about year end. As far as, do you guys ask for reports or at least have something from your department heads of what was over budget or under budget last year's budget? Um, that's more or less directed towards, or do you wait till you get your audit? Um, I'd, I'd like to know myself what budgets were over budget and what was under budget.
Have you asked before for that?
I, I said that. I, but I was told it was too early because they hadn't got all their dollars in, so I figured, I'm, I'm waiting another month now. It's the end of August. The bills, bills should be paid by the end of the year by now. July first is our year end. I would think that I could, I would hope I could be able to get something like that. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Lynch?
Um, several things. First of all, I want people to put on their calendars, September fourteenth through the sixteenth. That is when St. Ray Fields Parish is going to basically close the streets over at the northwest corner, over at Ford Road and Merriman, and have a wonderful festival as they do each and every year. On a personal note, I wish that God wraps his arms around Zachary and Shane and keeps them safe as they join the proud servicemen and women who keep us free each and every day. And Mayor, I move to appoint Chief Murray as acting city manager until the current city manager is back on the job or until a new city manager is in place.
Support from Councilmember Kerwin. Discussion from council?
Point, so that people in the audience understand, we have to have someone that signs papers. We have to have someone who is in charge because as was pointed out, directions are being given and they're not being given to anyone. So, sorry, Chief, um, you happen to be the person that I made the motion for. I know you'll do us a fine job.
Who is the support?
Jim.
Any more discussion? That is a fine pick since we do need an acting city manager. Any, uh, comments from the general public?
It'd be pretty ironed on Chief, but you give your two jobs. Now, I ain't going to handle it, but he's got to do it.
I trust with the fact that he's coming, uh, to fill in, that we have some integrity, trust, and someone we can have faith in. I think we'll see it.
Thank you.
Very well spoken, Mrs. Lynch. With, uh, Mr. Murray online, I have all the confidence in the world. He does a great job, a superb job with protecting our city, and he loves the city. And I think you'll be amazed and surprised at what a good job he'll do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't want to let an opportunity go by that I can talk. Uh, two of my sons that are different is night and day. I ask them, "How's this guy Bob Murray?" They said, "He is an okay guy."
Thank you. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch? Aye. Councilmember Kerwin? Aye. Councilmember Dodge? Aye. Councilmember Fetter? Aye. Councilmember Cording? Aye. Councilmember Squires? Aye. Mayor, welcome.
Aye. Did we have the public hearing covered in the vote, or do we need to?
It was right in the resolution. I'm sorry?
The public hearing for Mr. McClary, it has been voted on?
I believe it's in the copy of the resolution.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we covered that. Okay. Ms. Lynch, you have anything else?
Uh, just piggybacking on yours, you said September twenty-fourth, so that must be the date. Uh, no, I'm going to break it.
Okay, I have a few things. Uh, start out with the, the good things. The legacy run was a great day for our city. Uh, was involved in that, uh, having to be on vacation last week from Ford Motor Company. So, I was, uh, I watched the three-hundred-and-sixty, seventy motorcycles roll into town. Good food, good people. Uh, it was a great day. It's a great day for Garden City. My hats off to the American Legion Riders. Well-planned event. It was great. To Cheryl Stepanian, congratulations. Hope you have a great, happy retirement. And I was also Saturday at the community, uh, fall kickoff over at the high school for all the high school sports programs. And congratulations to Garden City High School, our city team. They won their first football game Friday night. Wow. Lot of comments made. Again, I like hearing from the public. I think I'm being misread. Uh, I'm going to use tonight as example. It's not just two minutes. You can come up every time we vote, and for a person to come up tonight to talk about the fire truck, they can talk for five minutes. Then they can come back up under the council rules, talk another five minutes before we voted on that. Then they can come up on the city manager removal of office and talk another five minutes. Then they can come up under public comments and talk another five minutes. This is one person, twenty minutes of this meeting. When we're here to conduct city business, I don't think we're cutting the public off. One person, and that's just four items, they could come up several other times, too. Every time we go to vote on something, they can come up five minutes on that one item. So, I just picked four of them, and that's twenty minutes. If we would go down to three minutes, then that would take them to twelve minutes. One person. Now, you multiply that by eight, ten, fifteen people, if everybody come up here for five minutes on every item. So, it's not two minutes. If you watch C-SPAN, watch our senators, our congressmen. I yield two minutes to the senator from Iowa. Everybody has time limits. They, they got, even a senator only has so much time on the floor. We're here to conduct city, that's what you elected us for. Let us lead the city. I'm not trying to push you out, don't want to hear from you, but you have ample opportunity, times to come up here and give your comments. I just don't think you need five minutes each time. Do you need five minutes to tell me your opinion about purchasing a fire truck? You come up, say, "Hey, it's great, give them the tools to do the job. We need to, we need to buy that fire truck. It's good for the city, congratulations on the grant." Or, "No, I'm not for this, we shouldn't spend the money." I, I think you're misreading what I'm saying, but I don't think there's anything wrong with dropping it to three minutes. We're still going to hear from the public. And I still say, if you have an issue, you can call us. You can come in city hall during the week. But, uh, you guys are twisting this around a little bit, and, uh, I use tonight as a perfect example. Watch the tape when you go home, you'll see some of the same people that came up. They had ample time to talk to us tonight. Twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes for one person? I'm sorry, that's the way I see it. And we can agree to disagree, but, uh, you know, it's more than two minutes. Uh, and again, you, you elected us to do a job, let us do that job. And if you don't like the way we're doing it, the next election, don't elect us. But, uh, I got elected to, to make decisions, to run the city, to conduct city business. And that's, you know, that's what we're trying to do. So, uh, we'll have more discussion on the time limits at, at the next meeting when we break it down. But this was a perfect example of why I think we need to drop to three minutes. Uh, no further business, uh, this meeting's adjourned.